穿过Bep's roof.
I'll move.
My second.
All right.
All right, the extension center coming up.
All right, so I'm Doug, I'm the chairman of the MU Extension Council here in Blesky County. And Blesky County oversees the Century Farm and Family Program like that. So on farms and families that have the family farms that have been in this county for a hundred years or longer. And so I'd like to, first of all, for first of all, the high family farm, they come on up here and be recognized. Thank you so much. Thank you very much for participating and bringing that, we appreciate it. Thanks, thanks to the county commission for allowing us to do this during their irregularly scheduled session. So first and foremost, we have this lovely aluminum block here for you. A lot to be proud, that's a long time.
Yeah.
Yeah, the most, the hardest, the most work about this was Rochelle Beasley dug through a bunch of old deeds. I helped us find what we need.
And if one of you minds taking a picture with them, or all of you, you know, don't mind.
How many farms?
There's. We try to award it every year going all the way back to seventy-six, but it's too. You want, you want me in this?
You're moving around.
All right. All right.
Thank you so much.
Another time. Can I breathe through the next area?
I don't know about that. And we have one more. I'd like to ask you. Farmer of one. So how long have you been in Florida? How long has your program been in Blesky County?
It's nineteen twenty.
Since nineteen twenty, all right. That was strong, just a second.
And our commissioners.
I don't know about this. I've studied around the same family. Congratulations, they'll do another hundred years. Hey Doug, do you know the longest family on the town? Uh, I do not.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We developed one like ten years ago.
And thank you very much.
Thanks for doing that.
We did, I know we did three or four each one time. Always back fifteen years ago.
You as well. He stays. I asked him, he asked him, probably. Morgan.
Morgan, we did the Morgan family fifteen years ago, I know that.
That'd be a long.
Yeah, we did that one probably fifteen years ago if I remember. Yeah. Then there's another family, I didn't recognize that name.
About Rogers Band.
That'd be over a hundred acres, don't it? Yeah, it's, you know, the Wathlins, they've been around here for.
Yeah.
I don't know if they've ever turned any of their farms over to the. Get one of them plaques, but I mean, they've been here a long time, the Morgans. The Doyle's. Uh, there's, I mean, there's.
Whitney was considered hard time for employee under thirty-two hours. So over thirty-two hours, you have to do benefits and stuff.
Thank you, Doug.
Thank you.
You said thank you.
Sheriff, he didn't, he did it again. He did it again, about eighty-two hours.
Don't even right now. Let's see once a cup of coffee now.
He did, he did the last time.
I actually did check and saw you had coffee. I noticed you had some.
Dean, have you ever heard of Almond Street?
Almond?
Yeah, do you know where it's at?
We went sweet, sweet bird, wouldn't it?
Yeah, I don't, I've never heard of it. Almond.
Apple, I think, around April and, I mean, there's not an almond.
There's not an almond there.
We tried to look it up a while ago on phone and I couldn't.
Unless it's a private drive somewhere else.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It would have to be a private driver inside of city limits.
Yeah, could be.
Somebody just called Kylie saying that they. Were coming to the commission meeting, they. Called for an ambulance to their house and the ambulance couldn't find their house. So they talked to nine-one-one, nine-one-one told them to come down here for some reason. It was on Almond, I think, Kylie said it was Almond or Almond Road.
You can get on my G I S.
But I looked.
Head east on Historic sixty-six east, US Bicycle Route sixty-six toward North Lynn Street.
Where they take Lexington Road. They took me out Lexington, somewhere off Lexington Road by the river. Private drive.
Well, Lexington's my area, I don't know if the sign's gone, I don't know what's. I have to go look at it.
I see, you got Rich drive up in here ways now. It's like twelve feet there. They keep stealing that one. You got a pole, both of those poles.
Oh, I had one, I was, I was so proud, I thought they were never going to get this sign. It never, it lasted a week.
Ricky put one up in a tree.
Yeah.
Yeah, and we use, we use twenty penny nails to dirt and drive it into the tree and it.
If you missed one on bunker, I know where it's at, just one in the, in the back glass of a vehicle off of Bar, Baring Road. It was there yesterday going through.
Well, I think the servants go right down the street here, and he had two of the, got these signs in the kitchen window. And he had signed them. So I called Saint Waynesville Police Department, that field there. They got them back, plus they paid two hundred dollars, put them back up.
Don't up at the prison, don't they still use prisoners to make license plates? I wonder if we can get them to make road signs. I, it's how you're making. And you know, you. I put, I put one up before, made the loop, put up signs, come back to that one, and it was gone behind us. I installed it in the site, just different, when you know the sign names like Beaver and all them ones that they think they need. Or somebody's name, they'll steal it right behind you. You know, I got thinking the other day, them plates are about gay thick. Them little GPS clips that they put in them, I'm wondering if person can cut a hole out in that. Peel that plastic up, put that in there, fix them up, and that way they can get, get a knock right on their door. You get times of that and they'll stop it. It's like that graffiti on the bridge, you can paint it out three days, it's painted right back.
There were some of these, oh, hell, they would go up there to paint.
Well, ours did pretty well, it looks like they set off a bunch of firework on it.
Kind of like. I like that road that F comes here and then there's a road that goes over the tracks.
Yeah, because it shows being off the left, that one shows sweet.
Yeah, that, that is a private drive that goes up over the tracks there.
But it is a private drive.
Yes.
At least it's still out today. I've got a Gerber Street on the off of W, I think it is. I think it's Gerber or, or G. Out there, you go past the old Wiener's Auto Body on the left-hand side.
It'll go private, you're on.
Is that your old Wiener's shop back there today?
Yeah, years and years ago, there.
Sierra shut his mouth on that one.
Yeah.
He wants to say something.
Don't quote me on that it was called Wiener's Auto Body back then, though. Now that I'm thinking about it, I don't know that it was.
It was something before.
Yeah, he had a shop up here.
Yeah, he had, he first started out there on W.
Yeah.
They were on racetrack.
Kind of wondering, I knew him as an retired man, I didn't bring him to his business one. I wasn't trying to do anything. Well, since we didn't really have to.
But there was. Well, I got it, thank you. Don't make that a record either.
Exactly.
I don't like, it's going to be approved or not.
He made a motion, he said. Now you got the two. I want you guys looking at that one first.
Yes, we can reply, or.
Yeah.
Players over here. Do you know where?
What taxes being paid still up here?
I did that, yeah, I did that, I got you.
I'm not scared, same shit.
I trust you. Government, he has signed, you know, shares the lines.
What is that?
Awesome, awesome, cheers.
I should have.
Those will do.
Yeah.
Was that up here, I mean, this was. That's, yeah, this is a fine port, but on the deeds and stuff, it's just. Two different lanes on it.
This one's made a good road. Change of course, registration.
That one there is a different one.
I don't know. Mike, how you doing?
How are you?
No FEMA funds for us. She's not old enough. She's not old enough.
But he is, well, one of them, yeah.
Yeah.
But why is he?
Say, yeah, she was born in.
Yeah.
But that property, they're, they want the trees on that one, but they live somewhere else, somewhere else, I think.
So unless they just never change the benefits.
Yeah, I don't know, that one was playing on top of this, I don't know. She told they'd have no.
This is broke his own Ellen Street.
Say too much out loud.
Where do you see that?
We'll have to go under it.
Dirty here.
Oh, she, yeah, she was. I like that.
Well, she did last year, she was here when we walked. She was here almost all day.
I let you know, I know them people, I just thought. Let you two decide on that one. Well, the, the man's name or the woman's name, I'm not familiar with, but when you go back into the deed. I, I'm branch of that guy and I don't know, I mean, I don't wanna say one way or another on it because. And I don't see his mom's name on there, she's the one that lives there right now. She's old enough for trees, but he's not. But the person that's on the application, don't. I don't even know who that is.
Yeah.
No.
That's the, that's another. That's the mom. You can see her son's name right there, so I. I don't know, but it's not neither one of them that's applying for that. I don't. I don't know. But that's, that's their address.
We better wait for her.
Yeah, up on there probably need to be looked at too.
The rest of them are good.
That one is good.
Do you know what?
You want to borrow my paddle? During the pod?
He's about to get verbally abused.
You can use that paddle reaching so. Use the paddle reaching. Gotta get you say thank you.
Yeah.
That hard to say or something?
Mercy manager. Are we saving that money in the salary?
Right now we are, yes.
Do you plans to ever find a different?
Do I just say correctly then that the interim person is not gonna be automatically promoted to be the?
Maybe we can decide that.
That's not automatic.
Uh, runs on a closer. At this time, this being is being closed, we hear all chapter six two one, they're trying to fix them. One legal.
Showed we was paying attention.
I did that before.
That's the worst thing happens today, we're all right.
Yeah.
I've really done what I have ran from.
Four and I pick up another three this week.
Did you call Dr.?
No, I have not called Dr. yet.
He asked the other day if you had any of them.
Yeah, I know, I need to, he said if we get a text.
Okay.
Okay.
Get it back to him.
What do you think? You just need the ninety day mark?
I'm at the sixty. Because that law changed a few years ago with Obamacare. On the ninetieth day, you have to have it.
Is Obamacare still there?
Is it?
Law's where it are.
We pay. What is it, nine percent? Our whole policy pays nine percent in my law.
We actually grow a little more than that.
A little more than that?
Yeah, the actual percentage is you have to pay those up a little bit each year, but we pay more than that.
Yes, we do.
Well, we make more than that.
As a whole, we've got to, this county has to pay into that system, we are in. I believe the ten percent.
Yeah. You mean the percentage that goes to that? Your property, right, now you're ten percent.
The total amount of insurance?
Right, so when you, so part of your premium that you pay goes to the Obamacare Act to help pay for those people that don't have insurance and stuff.
So, yeah, potentially, I mean, if you're paying a million dollars, yeah, what you're paying into.
I don't know, I don't know what it goes to.
Yeah.
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 That's right.
Unless you want to move to New York. You made it, well, you didn't give anything away.
That's what we do. You remember the movie Escape from New York? You never seen that? Seriously? Snake Bliskin?
Yeah, Kurt Russell and Snake Bliskin.
What is it gonna be?
A lot of movies.
But you'll get city on.
Yes.
The Soviet Union, nothing in.
So.
Right. Three rods inside.
They're gonna do free for rent. City grocery store. Thirty dollar mail away.
Let's get ready going.
You see what that Karen asked in California though? The mayor of Fallujan, everybody.
See that? Come across my Netflix feed. Yeah. Three of the letters. I didn't get back.
Do you need anything for the last dinner? Mister Whittle, you need to help a pad or?
Uh, if you, if you, if you want to, yeah, yeah, but yeah, the girl's missing updated. You had, you had a big fryer.
Yeah, it's only double basket.
Yeah.
The double bucket.
All them cagey. Yeah.
Yeah, more help there.
Are you smoking that? Yeah.
Are you smoking what?
No, I'm doing fish.
Oh. We haven't gotten our RSVPs and shares off. What are you talking about?
The county fish fry. Yeah.
You check your email?
Have you already, have you already bought the catfish?
Yeah. I'm buying.
I got, I got some bags of fish, come bring it.
Yeah, Dean's been running big dagger. I was trying to ask. I told you when you did it.
Go ahead.
Look, I need a picture.
We do it five year, every year we do it.
I say, ask him. There's a Louisiana catfish you can buy.
Did you call swine?
No.
No.
It's, it's better than the swine catfish.
Really?
It's about.
When you're a smug.
Ten dollars more case.
When you're a smug meat, when you're just.
But it's, it's a better fish.
Is that right?
Fish or a fish.
They should be able to get it, I, I bought it at the Price Chopper in Raleigh.
Yeah.
But it's that, you know, like the swine catfish is all just kind of frozen in a big.
Yeah.
These are individually frozen.
Yeah.
And then put in the box.
Yeah, yeah.
And it's a better catfish.
For their vacuum sealed in the individual pack?
Well, no, they're just, they're not all froze together in one big well. And so they're easier to separate and fry and, but it's a. It's a better catfish too, I think, I mean, we've ate them both, I had fish fry for my guys and I bought that.
And it's a Louisiana catfish.
It's a Louisiana catfish.
Okay. Yeah, I'll get, I'll get with you, let me get closer with that time. I got, I got two fryer, we're, we're gonna have chicken too, I have five ice cream issue. I'll get in there and. I figured you'd. She asked me about t-shirts.
But yes, it looks long.
Yeah. That's the new. Totally long.
I've seen the amount of the root.
Uh, with all the. Where was it at, somebody had got stopped in another city or state, I think, that had almost thousand pounds of meth and a bit of a pickup.
That's the truck. Three thirty.
I forget where.
Last night.
Alright, that's all. So.
How long ago was this? Was this the one out on, one, out on one fifty three?
Had to go up to a service car, start back, so I was on my way back.
Yeah, it was somewhere, yeah, they had like nine ninety, it was just shy of a thousand pounds.
Okay, yeah, that's one very graceful.
Yeah.
But it had.
Is it over in Raleigh?
Uh, well, that's what I'm saying.
Yeah, but it was. It wasn't us, but it was close, it was close, I mean.
Yeah, we're not talking the same.
No, this was a pretty big hit.
There'll be the three black F one P T's and then. The two proper cars. Wait, I don't know, did you send down the recalls on the vehicles? Somebody sent us recall.
It probably just came in the mail and they put them in your mailbox.
Oh, because I got, the ones that I got was, one of them was Rogers and the other one will be.
Yeah, they'd even called bells on them and then we, we're like, we don't have those and they've got to be somebody, so we just sent them.
I found it, it's Rogers.
Yeah.
He's got one of them.
Well, the, the description of the vehicle, that's the one I was figuring one of them it was, but.
F one fifteen, twenty-three F one fifteen.
Yeah. We sent them all down the line.
Yeah, he's got, he's got it, I found it. So. And then the other one was a, uh, uh, one of the old explorers that we had sold, all the, uh, prowls. And maybe the ones that worked on the red boat.
Yeah, the bunch of Chevy Sparks comes out, we do it, guys.
Bunch of what?
Chevy Sparks. That was big as this table, buddy, it ain't very big.
Clown car.
He trapped them to the hood.
Hey, he's walking, he's walking.
Yeah. Uh, was it? Lynn Creek has got a couple of Tesla's. Yo. I know at least one, but I heard that they got two, I've seen one.
They act pretty fast.
Oh, they're very fast. Yeah, they go zero to max power as soon as there is no lag.
I went out the other day, a guy had some issues with the road, he said, just park your truck and jump in my buggy, well, it was on a light dirt. AT, UTV and side by side. He said, do you hear that? I said, I hear it squeak, and he said, well, we haven't been able to find that, I said. Just get one with a gas motor, and I said, it's been out that squeak. Said it's too quiet, don't have a radio or nothing, but, yeah, it.
You won't hear that squeak.
Something with that van they got over here, Chevy, electric van.
Yeah.
I was as far as the corner chart. I like the size of it. Oh, about a hundred seventy-five miles, it ain't gonna work.
Huh.
Spend all your time plugged in?
Yeah, yeah.
Buy that and donate your van.
Yeah.
To the SRP.
That van, a real electric van would be good for the SRP, you go a hundred seventy-five mile.
You pull out the money.
Have you seen, have you seen the inside? Stop by, look at the inside of the back right there. You can haul twelve people to back that thing, they can all jump out, it's, it's amazing.
Drop in and push.
Hopefully.
Look at the inside of it. Look at people, come over to the inside of Chevy then. It's like, but.
He said he gets. It wasn't price tag.
The rim was like eighty some thousand, they dropped all the way down to like forty-nine.
Almost giving it away.
Money for it, I'll pick it up.
How do you know who it works? That's why sir, stop by, look at it. It would make a good, yeah, it would, it'd make a good van for what you need it for, as big as the inside is on it.
Special response needs swine.
Special response key.
That's, you, you went off the battery, it's going dead trying to get to a car.
You're gonna choke out of us. You're choked.
Never hear us coming.
Yeah, you won't hear them coming. No.
Turn in like the jets and.
That one that we had years ago.
Need up on.
Boy, you hear that thing coming.
Wow, you can kneel up on.
He's got. Kneel up on. Like tame rabbit.
Yeah. tame way.
Tame way.
But yeah, that inside was amazing, the, the back of that van, you can walk through it and everything.
Well, they build inserts for those where you can. So that's all electric?
Yeah.
So we go down there, we want it, we just come back and. And you give us the forty thousand, right?
For an S R P, do you really need one?
Have you seen the way I've transported our team lately?
No.
I'm gonna back up my pickup truck.
That's what gets a lot.
Everybody.
You can't ride in the back of the pickup truck.
Agen, Agen, Agen has plumbing.
They are the most. Who kidding you're talking to? They had a good bottom washer there.
Yeah.
What?
Yeah, we'll go there, you gonna be here after me?
Yeah.
We'll go run with that, let's show it to you, pretty neat. Just, it does, don't go a lot of mile, I mean, it only go a hundred seventy-five, a hundred eighty-five mile.
They should give me a discount, but I just gave them a cut.
A what? You can't go what?
Okay, okay.
Forgotten his camera.
My hands right there. My viewers. Oh. I bought my wife a Tahoe High Country.
Oh, yeah. Ooh, that's like a Damali.
That's what he said, what he did.
That's the Chevy's version of the Nolly.
Well, the Nolly's is the first GMC version of Tahoe.
Yeah, the, I looked at the High Country. Suburban they had on the middle of that day, like out of my.
Yeah.
Like ninety-nine thousand.
But you didn't pay much less than, for that.
I paid half of that.
Friend and, is he used?
He was a year old.
Oh.
Yeah.
That's a nice ride. That nice.
You know, like about to go ten speed transmission, it goes four, six, eight. You can get on that highway. You'll get twenty-nine miles a gallon. Now around here, they go. You get on an open road for a period of time, you fill the gas tank up, it'll say seven hundred miles empty.
It is like.
Not like this thing, yeah, right? I drove from here to Meskegan, Michigan, one thing I did.
It has that display, it's kind of annoying sometimes.
What engine did it get it? You got the six-two, it's a Demoli. Probably five-three. If it does it.
Let's get the four, six, eight, whatever that means, whatever one that is. But the ten speed transmission is what really threw me off, because I took it back to, it's like shift, it just keeps shifting, something's wrong with it. He goes, it's got the ten speed transmission, you're gonna like that. Then I took off on the highway, like I just count, I was counting the shifts in it. And it really gets good gas, I can get about eighty-five.
Knew that was.
Well, you know. I just moved the numbers around on speedometer.
Seventy, seventy just suggests. You can run seventy and others pass you like yourself.
Yeah, because that's white sign that told me was the suggestion.
It was more like guideline.
Yeah. You know Kenny Bowe, he, he rides with me all the time, the bowling tournament's all over the state. We were going on a road, he kept. He goes. You know, if I should go there, yeah. He goes, what's that sign say? I go, that's just a suggestion. He goes, he goes, you get pulled over, you tell the trooper that's a suggestion. I said, I will.
Yeah.
Yeah, ask you, if it's a suggestion, he knows who you're talking to.
You pulled my wife.
Oh, yeah. He's something else. He said, back before they had them center buried, if I had to go through the media and risk my life, just get the ticket, I don't care who you are.
What's that town down south, Raleigh, Raleigh, say?
Between Raleigh and Salem?
No, it's, it's a little small town.
He's talking about down in the bottom, coming down the big hill, over the, the old watermelon patch here.
I don't. I'll watch out, um.
I wouldn't say evening shade, but it's not evening shade, it's.
Between Raleigh and Salem?
Yeah.
No, Raleigh and Salem would be, uh, what's the name of that? They call it a town at the bridge. It's, there's a little bitty store that sits up, used to sit off to the right years ago, changed the highway.
Anyway, Dave, Dave was riding with me and I went to, we went down to.
The shoot radar there all the time.
Yeah, they smoked me in a county truck. Vida? No.
No, 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 it's in between Salem and Raleigh, it's, um. They gonna.
And of course, I was, I was in, you know, I didn't have my shirt like this on, I was in a dress shirt. And, uh, he said, you can't, he said, yeah, he said. Well, he said, I'm gonna write you a ticket, he said, you know how it works, so he said, you'll be able to have your prosecutor talk to our prosecutor, and he said, hell, they'll drop it, and I said, no, I don't do that. I paid her out of pocket, you know, it's, remember now, ninety-five dollars or something. So Dave, I said, I can't believe that, I ain't got a ticket in twenty years. You know, you just, it goes from fifty-five down to forty, I think, just, and I wasn't paying, I was talking to Dave, and I just honestly, I wasn't paying attention. Lake Spring.
Lake Springs, but that's not the town he's talking about, it's called, I know the one you're talking about, he sits and shoots radar there, all the. Uh, years ago, there's a cemetery at the top of the hill, he used to back in there and shoot, the troopers did years ago.
Yeah.
Oh, what the hell.
Anyway, he got me.
Well, it's, it's not showing the name of that little town where the water is. Lake Spring is, is the name of it, but it's a different name on the sign. Yeah, there's FF there, so yeah.
I can't remember. I got only traveled twice, but eight.
Years ago, right past, that used to be a single lane bridge on sixty. They changed that too, you get ready to go back up the hill. There were a lot of bad wrecks on that little single road, little bridge, it's all like that. They're coming down the hill, they can't stop.
Especially big logging trucks.
Yeah.
I can't. And it's blown one of them.